Good evening. The hour of 7:00 p.m., having arrived in a quorum of voters being president, is my distinct pleasure to call to order the 2022 Tewksbury Special Town Meeting. My name is Dustin Weir, and I am privileged to serve as town moderator this evening. Let the records show that a properly served and returned warrant is in possession. Please welcome Connections Academy sophomore Deja Allen to sing our national anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the rampart we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bomb bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, Deja. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liquidate and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Town meeting guidelines are printed in the back of the warrant for your reference. Voters are wearing orange ribbons. Display those ribbons prominently so the counters and I can see them. Visitors wearing red ribbons and other guests who are not registered voters in Tewksbury must sit in the visitor's section in the bleachers to my left. The press table is to my left. Members of the press must remain at a table while they are in the hall. Emergency exits are located at the back right corner of the gymnasium and in the cafeteria to both the left and right after you leave the gym. During the meeting, no one may stand in the entrances to the gym. Officials and article sponsors who are addressing the voters may use the podium on the floor. Voters speaking on an issue may use the microphone in the middle aisle of the front of the seating area. Please begin your remarks by stating your full name and street address for the record and speak directly into the microphone. There's a five-minute limit for any appearance at the podium. You can ask a question; the clock will not stop during the response. I will inform you when you have one minute remaining. Address all comments and questions to or through the moderator, not to officials or other voters. Visitors who wish to speak must have approval from the voters to do so. And we'll have three minutes. During debate on an article, if a voter submits an amendment for consideration in writing, we will debate and act on the amendment immediately, then continue debate on the article so only one amendment is pending at any time. Please remain seated while in the hall unless rising to speak or vote. Stay at your seats during the vote so our counters can accurately tally standing counts. Turn your cellphones off or on silent, and do not make phone calls in the hall. Chairman of the Finance Committee, Mr. Robert Kosmersky, will make the first motion on every article unless the Finance Committee is deferring to another board. Mr. Kosmersky, may I hear a motion to waive the reading of the warrant articles?
Mr. Moderator, I move to waive the reading of the warrant articles.
All those in favor of waiving the reading of the warrant articles, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Thank you; the vote is unanimous. Non-voters are not allowed to address the meeting without prior consent. Typically, we hear from non-voters who are employees, volunteers, or advisors to the town. Mr. Kosmersky, may I have a motion to permit certain non-residents to speak on issues?
Mr. Moderator, I move to allow certain anticipated non-residents to speak on issues, including Assistant Town Manager Steve Sadwick, Fire Chief Joe Kearns, School Business Manager David Libby, DPW Superintendent Brian Gilbert, Town Engineer Kevin Hardeman, Town Council Kevin Feeley, and others, some of whom may be asked to answer resident questions.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The vote is unanimous. If there are any other non-voters with us tonight, they may only speak upon further motion and consent of the meeting. Article 1. Mr. Kosmersky.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 1.
Do I see anyone rising for debate on Article 1? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a voice vote. All those in favor of adopting Article 1, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The vote is unanimous. Article 2, Mr. Kosmersky.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 2, transfer $600,000 from free cash for the purpose of the article.
Do I see any rising for debate on the article? All those in favor of Article 2, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The vote is unanimous. Article 3, Mr. Kosmersky.
The Finance Committee moves to adopt Article 3, transfer $2,861.08 from principal maturing debt for the purpose of the article.
Do I see anyone rising for debate on Article 3? Seeing none. This vote requires a nine-tenths to pass. I'm going to take this vote as a standing vote in reverse order, please. So all those opposed to Article 3, please rise at this time. I don't see anybody rising to oppose Article 3. All those in favor, please rise at this time. The vote is unanimous. Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Kosmersky, may I have a motion to adjourn the special town meeting?
I motion to adjourn the May 4, 2022 Special Town Meeting, Sinai Dey. Yeah, Sinai Dey.
All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much. We will reconvene at 7:30 for the continuation of the annual town meeting. Thank you.
Hello again. The hour of 7:30 having arrived and a quorum of voters being present, it is my distinct pleasure to call to order the 2222 Tuxbury Annual Town Meeting. My name is Dustin Weir and I am privileged to serve as town moderator for this evening. Let the record show that a properly served and returned warrant is in position. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Town meeting guidelines are printed in the back of the warrant for your reference. Voters are wearing orange ribbons. Please display those ribbons prominently so the counters and I can see them. Visitors wearing red ribbons and other guests who are not registered voters in Tuxbury must sit in the visitor's section in the bleachers to my left. The press table is also to my left. Members of the press must remain at the table when they are in the hall. Emergency exits are located at the back right corner of the gymnasium in the cafeteria to both the left and right after you leave the gym. During the meeting, no one may stand in the entrances to the gym. Officials and article sponsors who are addressing the voters may use the podium on the floor. Voters speaking on an issue may use the microphone in the middle aisle at the front of the seating area. Please begin your remarks by stating your full name and street address for the record and speak directly into the microphone. There is a five-minute limit for any appearance at the podium. If you ask a question, the clock will not stop during the response. I will inform you when you have thirty seconds remaining. Address all comments and questions to or through the moderator, not to officials or voters. Visitors who wish to speak must have approval from the voters to do so and will have three minutes. During debate on an article, if a voter submits an amendment for consideration in writing, we will debate and act on the amendments in order, then continue debate on an article. So only one amendment is pending at a time. Please remain seated while in the hall unless risk rising to speak or vote. Stay at your seats during the vote so counters can accurately tally standing counts. Turn your cellphones off or on silent and do not make phone calls in the hall. Chairman of the Finance Committee, Mr. Robert Kosmerski, will have the first motion on every article unless the Finance Committee is deferring to another board. If there are any non-voters with us tonight, they may only speak upon further motion and consent of the meeting. The next article pertains to the zoning bylaw. It is a complete rewrite of the existing bylaw drafted by a selectman-appointed zoning bylaw committee, comprised of representatives of the Planning Board, Select Board, and citizen representatives who all work closely with town officials and zoning experts to create the final product before you tonight. The zoning bylaw is a complex and interconnected document. Many of its sections are dictated by federal and state guidelines and statutes, as well as legal precedents and relate to dozens of other provisions within the bylaw itself. For these reasons, I encourage town meeting members to think carefully before offering amendments to the article. In the event that a town meeting member puts forth an amendment for consideration, I will evaluate it as falling into one of two categories after consultation with the Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager, Town Council, or the Town Planner. In the first category, the proposed amendment and its intent and consequences can easily be determined. Also, there would not appear to be any known or any unknown or potentially unexpected consequences that will affect other sections of the bylaw or result in running afoul of federal or state guidelines, statutes, legal decisions, or legal precedents. In the second category, the proposed amendment and its intent and consequences cannot be clearly determined or cannot be clearly determined whether there may be potential unexpected consequences that will affect other sections of the bylaw or result in running afoul of federal or state guidelines, statutes, legal decisions, or legal precedents. It will be the moderator's intent that if the proposed amendment falls into the first category, that it will be deemed proper and be allowed to move forward for debate. It will be the moderator's intent that if the proposed amendment falls into the second category, that the moderator will mark it as outside of the scope of the article and it will not be allowed to move forward. Ultimately, if you support an amendment that is deemed improper, your remedy will be to vote against the bylaw. Since this article was discussed at a duly noticed public hearing conducted by the Planning Board on April 11th, 2022, I will ask any members who present an amendment if it was previously discussed with the town officials or during the April 11th, 2022, public hearing. Article 29. Mr. Kosmerski?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends adoption of Article 29 and will defer to the Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Planning Board also voted unanimously for the passage of Article 29 and defers to the bylaw Subcommittee on the Motion. Thank you.
Let me try this. As a member of the Board of Selectmen and the Chair of the Zoning Bylaw Committee, I want to inform you that the Board of Selectmen, now Select Board, also voted unanimously to recommend adoption of this article. As the Chair of the Zoning Bylaw Committee, I wish you a good evening and thank you for being here tonight for this important discussion. I want to thank my fellow committee members and especially our town professionals, Steve Sadwick and Alex Louder, for their commitment and patience throughout this process. Numerous other people also contributed along the way to no doubt some lively discussion and debate. We all came to this from very different perspectives. I confess that I am by no means a zoning expert, but I learned a great deal about our town, some important topics, and the need to update our zoning structure. Most of all, I want to thank residents who gave us input and challenged us to reconsider and address areas of concern. They made the committee and the final product better. I am respectfully asking you to support our effort tonight by adopting our revised zoning bylaw. Let me offer some thoughts on why. This process was initiated by the Board of Selectmen almost six years ago because the current bylaw was viewed universally as outdated, confusing, contradictory, not in compliance, and had been chopped up by 133 changes over the past twenty years. The bylaw simply is no longer sustainable. It is equivalent to driving a twenty-year-old car on its last legs. Tuxbury deserves a newer vehicle with modern amenities. It is noteworthy that not one person in the six-year process stepped forward and advocated for keeping our current bylaw. Most of you know, we were here last year and our proposal failed by two votes. The defeat stung, but we were not deterred. In fact, I believe it spurred more residents to engage in the process and the committee itself reinvigorated its effort by hosting more public input sessions and incorporating email communications from residents into its effort. No doubt, there was more active resident input in the last year than in all the time before the 2021 Annual Town Meeting. Ensured, the process was improved. I submit that virtually all of the concerns requested changes raised last year and since have been addressed in some manner over the past twelve months. Not all were adopted, but they were considered. That commitment required more effort, more communication, more listening, and more compromise. In the end, I feel this proposal warrants your support. It may not contain everything you want. It certainly doesn't have everything I want. But in the public realm, compromise must be part of the process. We need your support tonight because if this does not pass this evening, be assured that we will all be stuck with the current bylaw for the foreseeable future that no one likes or supports. One example of what we will be stuck with is the continuation of a lack of a cap on how many multifamily units can be built per acre, an area of concern many of you have remarked. Some of the highlights of this bylaw proposal include: no fee in lieu of affordable units on any multifamily development; no fee in lieu of affordable units on residential subdivisions if we are under 10% affordable housing threshold. If we go over the 10%, the fee in lieu will become discretionary; elimination of numerous overlay districts that added confusion; more clarity, consistency in terminology, definitions, and organization to the document; and we brought up to current statutory standards where required. I want to stress that while we're proud of this end result, the committee recognizes it will require future modification. To that end, in October, we plan to propose adding retail marijuana zoning provisions to the bylaw, for example. We opted not to do so now because the regulatory controls need to be addressed in a different forum in conjunction with zoning changes. As I said, the current bylaw had 133 changes over twenty years. No one should consider this a once-and-done effort. I teach a law school class. When I give an exam, there's a time limit. When the time limit is reached, students must rest on their answers and live with the results. We are in similar territory here tonight. I want to offer a few other comments in anticipation of some of your thoughts. First reactions will suggest this is too complicated for town meetings, one article. We should break it up. If you followed the process closely, you may feel a bit differently than those taking it up tonight for the first time. I ask you to trust in those who have looked under the hood extensively. Be assured, we considered breaking it up into sections extensively. But the bottom line is that the town meeting process makes that nearly impossible. We are not making selective changes to the bylaw. We rewrote and reorganized the entire document. Imagine having one portion changed and the balance unchanged over a period of multiple town meetings over a number of years. There would be no connectivity, confusion would reign, and we would be worse off than we are right now. I know there will be an urge to possibly amend the document tonight. And while it is your right, I implore you not to. There will undoubtedly be a need to do so over time, but the test is over and pencils are down. We need to set the foundation for the future tonight while recognizing that we cannot address every possibility or contingency this evening. Reasonable people will address areas requiring attention as they develop and we will have a good foundation to work from. Some others may say that literally all the committee meetings should have been televised. We considered that, but I ask that you consider we were working in the COVID era and our television team was overtaxed for two full years with virtual meetings. We and I accept full responsibility if anyone disagrees, compromised on this point by televising and taping all the public input sessions over the past year. In addition, we had residents in attendance at all of the fifty-five committee meetings, to the best of my recollection. Every meeting was properly posted and held at town hall. Every meeting has approved minutes on file and on the website. All changes proposed have been outlined on side-by-side comparisons for all to see. Every draft was online for all to view. There were eight public input sessions and nine videos posted on the website. The committee met earlier this evening and even approved its final minutes from tonight and then voted to dissolve the committee upon completion of this town meeting. There will be no further work on this topic. After six years, nearly $100,000 consulting fees, countless meetings, and a renewed and improved effort over the past twelve months, it is time to adopt this much-needed change. Failure is not an option as the alternative is to be stuck with a flawed and outdated structure that nobody wants. Mr. Moderator, I earned support of this article and I offer a motion to adopt it now. But I also want to explain to town meeting that I do have an amendment proposed by the zoning bylaw committee to present. I'm hopeful that we will adopt the amendment and ultimately the entire article. May I speak to the amendment?
Yes, sir.
So I know that I previously cautioned about offering amendments, but on behalf of the committee, I offer one final change that was approved just a short time ago. This is being done because over the last two weeks, a concern developed through the process that was focused on building heights within the Office Research Districts. Residents followed the committee's process of communicating to the committee in advance of tonight and as such, we felt that this last change was both appropriate and reasonable. We effectively are bringing the language back to the existing bylaw language with no other changes. This amendment has been fully vetted and adopted by the committee. We're hopeful that this approach also shows good faith to you and that the process was followed completely. The amendment is as follows. In Section 5.3.4 for the Office Research District, we propose to change the maximum height (stories) from 5 to 3 and maximum height (feet) from 60 to 40. And we want to change footnote B of Section 5.3.4 to read, except that in the I-1, I-2, and OR districts, the Planning Board may grant a special permit to increase the maximum building height to five stories and 60 feet. Again, that would restore this section of the bylaw and footnote to the existing language. With that, I'll give that to you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience and as stated, I'd offer a motion to adopt that amendment and ultimately- and ultimately to adopt the article with that amendment. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. As a courtesy to the various committees that I'm going to lean on for advice on these amendments, and a courtesy to me, if anyone else has written amendments that they intend on presenting tonight, not mandatory, you can do it as the debate progresses, but if you have them written and ready to go, would you care to please step up to the microphone and present those amendments? You see the gentleman rising? I think so. I'll have him presented. Thank you for presenting the amendment. We have Mr. Johnson's amendment on the floor. I'm just going to need one moment to check with counsel on his amendment, and I'll read Thank you. Mr. Johnson's amendment in writing, Section 5.3.4 for the OR district, change the maximum heights (stories) from 5 to 3, and maximum height (feet) from 60 to 40. If you'd like to review it, it's on page 57 of your warrant. It's the bottom half of the first table. Also, the amendment changes footnote B of Section 5.3.4 to read, except that in the I-1, I-2, and OR districts, the planning board may grant a special permit to increase the maximum building height to five stories and 60 feet. Do I see anybody rising to debate the amendment? Mr. Ferdinand, thank you for your patience.
No problem.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and do a voice vote on this first amendment on Section 5.3.4. All those in favor of adopting the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The amendment is adopted, and it was unanimous. Mr. Ferdinand, would you like to speak on the overall?
I didn't know if you wanted to do the other amendment, but George Ferdinand, 56 Pratt Street. I stand in support of Article 29. But I do have to ask this: Do I have as much time as the chairman had?
He put in quite a bit of work and sponsored the article. I felt appropriate that he have a little extra time to present.
Thank you. I'd like the record to show that in June of 2015, nine months after I moved to the town and found out that the master plan was updated, I got together with the assistant manager, at the time he was the Department of Development, Steve Sadwick, and nine months after I moved, I sent the formal request to the select board, the planning board, and the town manager to update the zoning bylaw. The reason why I say that, okay, is I'm getting very agitated that I keep hearing, like even from the chairman tonight, he said the process six years? No, it's seven years since the time I put it in, okay? He doesn't want to recognize that, and I would like to make a comment on the TV, but I'm not going to because it's not related to 29, but he could say something about it. Six years later, it was rejected at town meeting. And let me say something about that: In negotiations, it was rejected, and the two mentioned, the chairman mentioned that there was two things that changed the fee in lieu. Well, guess why they were changed? Because we voted it out, but in negotiations, I have experience of it. I'm asking everybody, please vote this thing in. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ferdinand. We have a second amendment for consideration. Would the sponsor of that amendment care to come forward and discuss the amendment?
Sorry. My name is Robert Wall. I live at 97 Cartier Road. You're asking for new amendments?
You've presented one already. If you care to speak on that particular amendment, that would be a good time.
First, I do want to thank the committee for years of patient work. Overall, I support the proposed bylaw. In particular, I welcome the addition of biosciences to the list, explicit list of things that can go in an office and research area. I have benefited from work in that field, and I'm sure most of us have. My question, my concern, is whether Level 3 and Level 4 biohazards are allowed in
Mr. Sadwick, I believe, just to repeat the question, this question is...
Yes, Bob, could you please repeat the question? I got pieces of it, but we were talking about the amendment while you were speaking.
Okay. Level 3 and Level 4 biohazards are serious hazards. A lot of communities don't want them. Are they allowed in, under the proposed bylaw, zoning bylaw, in the OR district?
So when that use, when that use was put into the use table, it was not looked with that level of specificity. So it's an unanswered question. We don't specifically allow for it, and we don't specifically not allow for it. It's been brought to our attention based on what you've provided, including the definition of those different levels of facilities. So in looking at that, and I will let town council speak to it a little bit more, but that was not taken into consideration, and like I said, it's not specifically allowed and it's not specifically denied. But I think hearing your concerns and what you've provided to us, the zoning enforcement officer would probably take a very close look at not allowing those types of uses. And I think, again, I'll let town council speak to the amendment itself, but if it's not addressed at this town meeting, then it could be addressed at a future town meeting.
You have two minutes left, sir, if you'd care to continue.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, there are two amendments that have been proposed, and my interpretation of the two amendments is the amendment that was offered concerning a restriction for the location of continuous care retirement communities. I would say that that one is in order, and the amendment that was offered looking to restrict the biosafety lab laboratories, in my opinion, would be outside the scope of the article and not in order, since it was not in any way part of the proposed zoning bylaw that has been put before the townspeople and the town meeting voters here tonight.
So does that mean that the biosafety issue cannot be addressed? That's a call for ruling from the chair, I think.
I'm going to need to confer with council to make a final decision on both of your amendments.
I didn't talk about the second one, but fine.
Okay, good. We'll take these in order. The first one we'll discuss is the biosafety amendment. I'd like to take a three-minute recess to be able to confer with council, and then I'll come back to you, sir.
Did you want to add something?
With my answer. Before we do that, the amendment states biosafety Level 3, BSL 3. BSL 3 laboratories are used to study infectious agents or toxins that may be transmitted through the air and cause potentially lethal infection through inhalation exposure. Researchers perform all experiments in biosafety cabinets that use carefully controlled airflow or sealed enclosures to prevent infection. BSL 3 laboratories are designed to be easily decontaminated. These laboratories must use controlled or directional airflow to ensure that air flows from non-laboratory areas such as the hallway into laboratory areas as an additional safety Excuse me, that was the background information.
Yeah, that's background. Very short, a proposal.
Yeah, sorry. The amendment states, Use Table 8.5.8, Research and Development Laboratory, which may include accessory manufacturing of products in testing and development, except Level 3 and Level 5 biohazards are excluded. Do you happen to know what page Use Table 8.5.8 is on, sir?
By the way, that's Level 3 and 4, not 3 and 5. There's no such thing as 5.
I assume you'd like me to correct the scrivener's area on this amendment? Level 5, 2...
Level 4 is bad enough. Level 4 is bad enough.
All right. And do you happen to have the page number of the warrant for me, sir?
No.
Okay.
Use table start on 146 or 147.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to take a three-minute recess. I'm going to look up a particular section, confer with council, and reconvene. All right, we took a little bit longer than I had anticipated. I believe we have -- sir, would you like to speak in the amendment?
Sure. After discussion with the Chair of the Zoning Bylaw Committee, I withdraw in favor of an amendment which she'll offer.
Get close to it.
I withdraw my amendment in favor of one that the Chair of the Zoning Bylaw Committee will offer.
Thank you very much. We now have a motion to withdraw from the petitioner the amendment that was put forth. All those in favor of withdrawing the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Vote is unanimous, thank you. Let's do it after this one, because we already have this one. Moving to your next amendment about continuing care retirement community. So, this amendment states, "Use Table 8.3.D. Nursing, rest home, similar long-term residential, except congregate care, not about single-family A-40 zone, which may include accessory adult daycare." Am I reading that correctly?
I think you're reading it correctly, but the grammar is pretty clumsy.
Okay. Feel free to just describe your intent of this amendment.
Congregate care projects, in my experience as a social worker, are huge. They try to be an entire community to service the people who live there. They tend to be high rent and profits are borrowed with an apartment house. So, actually, I start with the question of, are they taxed as residences or as commercial?
Mr. Montori?
Mr. Moderator, can we just have clarification so we can find the issues?
Sorry, Use Table 8.3.D.
There's actually another reference to it in the A-2.L. that has the same restriction, not one that applies to a single-family A-40 zone.
8.3.D.
Is that part of the amendment?
Yes.
Same issue.
Okay, both modifications are on the Use Table on warrant page 121. The first one, if you go down to line L, "Continuing care retirement community," it's about the fourth line from the top, and then go down to 8.3.D., "Nursing home, rest home, similar long-term residential congregate care, which may include accessory adult daycare." Both of those lines on the table are on page 121 of the warrant. Mr. Montori, would you care to answer the question about the taxes?
They are taxed at residential, and that's per the Department of Revenue.
Sorry?
Per. The Mass Department of Revenue. It's not a town decision, it's the state.
Okay.
So, that means their office uses, research uses would not be available. I know that the town in Handofer was quite in a ruckus a few years ago, because somehow the congregant use slipped into their zoning law, and the building that resulted was huge, monstrous, well out keeping with the rest of the neighborhood. These facilities are big money makers. They won't be owned, they're a big corporation, nowhere near us. So, on the grounds of the size and the tax issues, I think they should be kept away from the single-family areas, the A-40 zones.
Again, I need to discuss this with town council, shoot for four minutes this time, give a little extra, and we'll come back in four minutes. Thank you. Thank you. Would the petitioner care to come to the microphone? We have a decision on the amendment on the table. On the floor, excuse me. Sir, after conferring with town council and looking through the proposed zoning bylaw, unfortunately, we're unable to identify precisely how the bylaw is to be changed to accommodate the intent of the amendment. Therefore, I'm forced to identify this as a second category for my introduction. However, you know, I would encourage you to review the zoning bylaw and identify specific changes that would affect the intent of this and propose an amendment to the bylaw in October's meeting.
Okay. Now, thank you for considering it.
Thank you very much. Are there any other amendments? Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And this amendment is in response to the resident's first amendment that he withdrew. So, we're offering an amendment, and I'll refer you to page 123 in the warrant. It's the Use Table. The amendment would make one change. It's in Section 8.5.A. All the way over to the third column from the right-hand margin under OR, or Office Research. It currently has a Y. We will strike the Y and replace it with the letters PB for Planning Board Special Permit.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there a copy of the amendment in writing? Yes, sir, thank you. And just to be clear, Mr. Johnson, you are the sponsor of this amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. The amendment on the floor, page 123 of the warrant, under column OR, the third one from the right, down about two-thirds, modifies A-5.A., "Research and development laboratory which may include accessory manufacturing of products in testing and development." Third column from the right, that is column OR, changes the current Y to PB. Is there any debate on the amendment? Yes, sir.
Bruce Pallanitis, 218 Foster Road. I stand opposed to the amendment. It is unnecessary. Any BL 3 or BL 4 work would be significantly regulated by state and federal guidelines. Nobody's gonna just drop a BL 3 or BL 4 facility in Tewksbury. They would have to go through months and months of state regulations. It's governed by the Department of Environmental Protection. There is no reason for us to muddy up our bylaws with this amendment. If it's something we want to look at in further, this is something we should take up at a future meeting. There's no need to mess this up. We should leave it as a use by right. We want to encourage bioscience to come to our research parks. We shouldn't discourage it by asking them to go get a special permit. No reason for this at all. I stand against it.
Thank you, Mr. Pallanitis. Do I see anybody else rising for debate on the amendment? Do I hear a motion on the amendment? Did you move? Already, sir?
Sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Moderator, I'll allow for a motion to adopt the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The vote on the floor, voice vote to amend the bylaw, Section, bylaw table, row A-5.A., column OR, from a Y to a PB. All those in favor of accepting the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
I think I'm gonna have to do a voice vote on this one, or a standing vote, a standing count on this one, excuse me. The counters, please come to the table.
It's just a point border. It's just a simple majority. It's not a majority.
Okay, on the amendment, the zoning bylaw amendment, to change row A-5.A. in the acceptable Use Table, column OR, from a Y to a PB. All those in favor of accepting the amendment, please please rise. Thank you. All those opposed to the amendment for research, development, laboratory, please rise at this time. Okay. The tally is sixty-five in favor, fifty opposed. The amendment carries. So on page 123, the article on the floor, section A five A, column OR, the Y has been changed to a PB. I believe that's all the amendments we have in hand. Do we have further discussion on the article itself, Article One? Article, are you appearing? Sorry, Article twenty-nine, excuse me. Okay. So, zoning bylaw, excuse me, zoning bylaw requires a two-thirds vote, with the number of people in here, I would like to take, this is a standing vote as well. So. Okay. So, the motion to adopt Article twenty-nine, entire bylaw replacement as amended. All those in favor, please rise at this time. Counters, please count the votes. Okay. All those opposed to adopting Article twenty-nine as amended, entire bylaw replacement, please rise and be counted at this time. Thank you. With a vote of one hundred and twenty-one to one, where two-thirds is eighty-one votes, the article is adopted as amended. Article thirty, Mr. Kozmerski.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends adoption of Article thirty and will defer to the planning board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The planning board also voted unanimously to adopt Article thirty and defers to the bylaw subcommittee.
All right, Mr. Moderator, thank you. The Board of Selectmen also voted unanimously in support of Article thirty, and on behalf of the zoning bylaw subcommittee, I make a motion to approve Article thirty.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Do I see any debate on the article? Seeing no one rise, this article also requires a two-thirds vote. So I'm giving you guys a leg workout tonight, so I apologize. We are going to take this as a standing vote as well. So all those in favor of adopting Article thirty, please rise. All those opposed to Article thirty, please rise at this time. I'm seeing no one rising. Thank you. Article thirty is adopted with a unanimous vote of one hundred and twenty-one votes in favor. Article thirty-one, before we begin debate on Article thirty-one, would the petitioner or petitioner's representative care to address the assembly regarding the article? Yes, sir.
Doug Sears, AD Tiger Drive, I rise on behalf of the proponent to withdraw Article thirty-one without prejudice.
Thank you, Mr. Sears. We do have on record a document authorizing you to act on the petitioner's behalf.
I do.
And. We have from the petitioner, a motion to withdraw Article thirty-one. All those in favor of withdrawing Article thirty-one, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries unanimously. Before we adjourn this meeting, I would like to thank the media and custodial staff at Tuxbury Memorial High School for their efforts in preparing the town hall and televising the meeting. I would like to thank Town Clerk Denise Graffio, Assistant Town Clerk Sarah McMullin, the checkers, the counters, the police officers on duty, for their work before and during the meeting, and all of you for continuing Tuxbury's long tradition of open government. My thanks to the town manager, town council, the Finance Committee, and everyone else who had helped me prepare for and manage this town meeting. It has been an honor to serve in this position and be part of the local government. Mr. Kozmerski may have a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn the May two, 2022 annual town meeting today.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is adjourned, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.